...are required in the public comment to state your name and address in an audible tone for the public record. This proposal here, this revision, basically says that you need to write your name and address on the sign-in sheet. And then the presiding officer, if they can't read or see what that is, they can ask you to clarify your address. You still will have to state your name for public record. So it's a slight revision in that that would streamline the process and is one way to address some of the current concerns that were stated by councilman.
Okay, so, um, does anybody have any question? We'll vote on that on Monday night. I mean Tuesday, I forget. Veterans Day is on Monday, we will be closed, so this will be Tuesday night at 5:00. Okay, consideration of J A T Consulting Contract.
Okay, presently, we have a contract with J A T Consulting Services. They are a finance and accounting company out of Kennesaw, Georgia. They have been our financial consultant and since last year, their contract runs out in December of this year. So what we wanted to do is bring their contract again forward to the city council for consideration. The only revisions between this contract and last year's contract were they added in another classification line, which is an accounting clerk, which is a lesser cost and fee. So the individuals that we use now can actually bring paperwork down to a clerk, so it will cost us less in the foreseeable future.
Is that part of the plan? Is that what she's planning to do?
Yeah, instead of her having to do all the work, she could use an individual in her office to do printing and compiling the data.
Hope and Susan found this lady and brother, two of us, and she has been awesome. She has straightened out things, she's got everything so, best I've ever seen. So I had to have her on board, she has made a big difference. You know, back when we didn't have any money, we did little budgets and going in and running right back out, didn't matter. And now that we have a little bit and we have all these places it has to go, it really needed to be taken care of and really watched over diligently. And Rachel has done a great job, would you agree? I think she really, really has. So that's what that is about. So be ready on Tuesday night. And then this new little, is it an ordinance? Okay, it's a resolution. Okay, I'll let you talk about it.
Well, we're asking for this consideration, a resolution by city council to bring on a language access plan. This is a requirement for the federal grant, we got C D B G grant. Basically, in a nutshell, it is intended to reduce language barriers for non-English speaking individuals. So if we have individuals that are non-English speaking that want to know more about the C D B G and its process and how it's being run, we will have a process in place to make provisions to those individuals to transfer it and put it into their native language. It is with assistance by the state and C D B G, and the forms and documents are here to explain how we would do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Can I have a minute of your floor, Susan?
Yes.
You can have the floor.
Oh, right now, okay.
I just wanted to take a second and thank all of you up here, the hard work that y'all have put in in my last four years has, may have gone unseen, but it has not gone unwarranted. And I just love and appreciate every single one of you. I've really gotten to know y'all and respect working with y'all. I wanted to congratulate the two gentlemen that are now our new city councilmen. I think you're gonna do a wonderful job. I wish you the best of luck. And then I just wanted to thank the citizens. This has been an awesome four years. I have learned so much more than I ever thought I would, probably more than I wanted to know. And I wanted to thank y'all for allowing me the opportunity to serve on the council and to be a part of the community in a deeper role than just as on the sidelines. I pray for our community. I hope that there's healing in our community. I hope that we can get behind, beside, over, whatever you want to call it, everything that we have been through. This is an awesome little community, and I would love to see it restored back to such. And I look forward to seeing these gentlemen do that. And as my input, a little bit of what I've learned just to the citizens is, I can't communicate to you enough that these two and the rest of the people up here are only human. They're only human, and everything that you say at them, they have to take home with them. And they have to sleep at night knowing the words that you have hit them with. So please be respectful of them. They get up here and they spend their time working for nothing. This is a volunteer position. They're working on behalf of you. And while they may not always make the decisions that you think that they should make, they're making the decisions that they think are better for our community. So please just treat them with respect and dignity and honor. And with that, it's been a fun run, and I've stayed for enough public comments before, so I'm gonna excuse myself before I have to listen to those again. So, thank you.
Okay, it is time for social input. I went, did I do something wrong?
No, that's it. Unless there's questions from anyone.
Sorry about that. Okay. Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, sir.
I didn't see a sign in list when I got here. Richard Green, 122, says, "Could we get an update on the status of the traffic study being done in connection with the COVID?" What's the status? That's been a long time.
Yeah, Richard, I'll try my best to answer that. We just met with Georgia D O T last week, and I asked the same question, and he called me back yesterday, I think it was. And he told me that so far, what they have just worked on is the entrances out onto 53. But of course, my question was to him, I wanted to know more about Peachtree and 53. And he said they haven't knocked that far yet, that they were just working on entrances, that they were working that way, and he would keep the update. And that was a message he left on the report or so.
He who?
What was the gentleman's name, the head gentleman's name?
Justin, you remember the, uh, Shannon?
Shannon, yeah. I think that's right. Gillis. Sorry. He didn't say, he just left me that message, and I haven't had a chance to call him back. But I really wanted him to come in and show us what's going on, so that I can...
Shannon Gillis and Justin Watt.
Okay, Shannon Gillis is the one that called me back. And that's all I got to tell you, because I said to him, hey, I'm not getting feedback on this road thing, I need some feedback. And that's what I got yesterday, I just never had a chance to call him back.
From my standpoint, anyway, it seems to have a saint, that this thing is being built, I mean, it's proceeding right along. It's supposed to have model houses, certain number by the end of December, I think. They're on Zillow right now, saying, you know, come see me and look at these floor plans, and yet, no traffic study.
If I may add, when it went through the D R I process, which is development, regional impact and review of that, there was a proposed traffic study of the impact that would be done. And that's how they came about some of the design requirements as far as the ingress and egress lanes, the length of them, how long they, where they're located, how they need to be placed. So the designs that are being implemented right now were based upon part of the traffic studies that were done at that time. There are also some more interim traffic studies that are put in the D R I report that needed to be done as thresholds of development. So when I don't know the exact numbers, I'd be more than happy to give you that copy of the D R I that says that, and I'll make up a number, 52 houses, and it's not that number. They would need to do additional traffic studies that would need to be done, that will show what needs to be implemented before the next phase is developed. So it's done as an incremental stage, based upon the original D R I that was done a year or so ago.
When these products are developed, well, how will they be made known to, or will they?
As far as, if there's any traffic revisions or changes that will be done on the, obviously the state highway going through there, there would be signs posted and all those types of things that will be required by the state to say, we are looking at changing those things. So we would give everyone the same courtesy if we're doing anything along the other...
Peachtree.
Yeah, Peachtree. So we would do that for sure.
But my concern is just like yours, I want to know what's gonna happen later. And, you know, Georgia D O T's gonna empty by themselves, and I'm trying to pull them in, say, what are we doing together here? What is the point? So I'll do my very best to sit down and talk, and let you know as things go along.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Ms. Armadini?
Just before we start, I just want you to know, I'm gonna choose to proceed as I was, as planned, even though Mindy, I respect the shift, but I wanted to still...
That's all right, thank you.
Mindy, thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for being one of a small group of citizens who stepped up to become a public servant. Our government is built off of participation, access, transparency, and healthy debates. We were not always on the same page, but your service is appreciated. We wish you and your family all the best, and I'll once again thank them, as I did a few months ago, for their service to the community. Have a pleasant holiday season and good luck with your studies. I hope the flowers are a bright reminder of our good times in office. I just wanted to publicly state that. Okay, now I'd like to go on.
Susan, we thank you as well for coming tonight and want to extend our appreciation for your service to the city. You took on this volunteer position just after you wrapped up a long and exhaustive career at the federal level. Most people haven't endured the pace you did for decades, would have simply said it is now me time. Instead, you jumped straight in here to help with the city in whatever way possible, and did so bringing with you the skills amassed over your career. There is no denying, you ask people to give their best, and your standards are high. Sometimes this doesn't match with other people's drugs, but you can say for certain, you tried to elevate the professionalism and response time from the city. You held feet to the fire when necessary. It was your courage that will be the lasting memory of your service to Hushton. Courage to speak out even when it was uncomfortable. It probably felt like you and Hope were on a small island for a while, but I hope you felt bolstered as the community not so quietly gathered beside you. We wish you well in your retirement and hope you and Bill can finally enjoy traveling the country. Same roads ahead to the both of you, and I hope the flowers are a sample of the good times ahead. To Shanjoan and Adam, congratulations to you both. Thank you for your decision to serve the city. This is not a decision either of you took lightly, and you have some interesting years ahead as you navigate the world of public service. Know that the community will be here to support and challenge you. My advice to you is to reach out to other elected officials and staff in surrounding areas. I found our neighbors to be eager to help and invaluable resources as we navigated one crisis after another. If you go to them humbly, they will go out of their way to offer guidance. Most importantly, make a special effort to stay in touch with your constituents. Don't be deterred by being new, it is not a liability. Trust me, 10 years ago, me, Scott, and Jim were immediately faced with a sanitation bid. We made it happen on time, along with your mayor. And we had years of exceptional service that included extra roll-offs, extra large roll-offs, roll-off recycling, Monday pickup, and they even took our white boots to keep our city looking spiffy. You will do just fine. Finally, to the 22% of Hushton citizens who took five minutes to vote in this last election, I thank you. To the other 78%, we hope to give you another chance very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. Scott Baller?
Good evening. I'm gonna try not to talk into that thing, because it reverberates. On Wednesday, October 30th, a city councilman made a statement to the Wildflower Homeowners' Association that was heard as, quote, "The Deer Creek Farms neighborhood is going to sue the Wildflower Homeowners' Association for damage created by stormwater runoff." That was news to us in Deer Creek Farms.
That was clarified before that meeting was over.
Okay, so could we hear what this, because there at the meeting, people still...
The statement that I made was, Wildflower doesn't want to get sued by somebody downstream in Deer Creek for something that needs to be repaired. That was the statement, Scott.
Okay, that's why I said it was heard as, because I wasn't there.
Well, I've got plenty of witnesses that heard it the way I said it.
Okay, so I'll say real calm.
That's why I'm here, I just wanted to hear what was said. I heard the different, so that's good. Good news, we've got two new council members that were elected by a two-to-one margin. And I've heard for a long time how people want to unify this community. And I have to say, rarely if ever have two politicians been able to unite a community to be driven by y'all. Ninety-two percent of Hushton voters who presented with the opportunity to sign a recall petition against y'all have done so with enthusiasm. It's been wonderful for us, we're thankful for that. Many of us met wonderful new neighbors, and we've created new friendships. Eight months ago, one person stood up and asked for justice. Her voice was ignored. Today, the people that have collectively provided almost 800 signatures on the recall petition are demanding that y'all resign. There's gonna be a recall. The citizens of Hushton are proven that the people have a voice in their government, and no amount of racism, deceit, or corruption can keep that voice from being heard. Thank you.
John Hope, your turn.
I am Joe Booth, 777 Buck Trail here in Hushton. Just a little bit more than 12 months ago, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners unanimously rejected a plan to construct four distribution facilities on what we call purple property. I can show where the purple property is on that map, if that helps. But before I do that, part of the reason I'm standing here right now is that prior to that, Towne Brazetson had rejected the same type of request, rezoning for industrial development. At some point, it was reported in the paper that members of this council had talked to the same developers for the same purpose. A group called Citizens for a Better Jackson County had legal counsel construct a letter informing the city and the council that we were opposed to industrial development on that property for a number of reasons that are spelled out in this letter. 12 months has passed, it's particularly of interest to developers that 12 months has passed, because that's the time period that has been passed before that can be reconsidered by the Board of Commissioners. I just wanted to remind the council that Citizens for a Better Jackson County still opposed to industrial development on that parcel. In particular, this letter was sent to the city council, but I don't believe that Mr. Hawes has a copy of it, because he wasn't an employee at the city. So with your concurrence, I will provide him a copy of that.
I'll be right.
All right, great.
Thank you.
One of the things that it says in that letter is that in addition to the fact that we're opposed to industrial development, we also propose the establishment of a citizens' advisory council, that if, in fact, that property comes up for discussion, that people who would be directly impacted by that would be very grateful for the opportunity to provide input in that process with the city of Hushton's involved. Thank you.
You're welcome. Joe, I just want, I'll answer some of what you were just asking about.
Yes, ma'am.
That piece of property is in our service delivery area. That means we are supposed to provide water or sewer if we have it to that area.
Would you mind me pointing that out for people who don't know?
Now, um...
Thank you, ma'am. The Hushton purple property is roughly here.
That's correct, that is correct. It is in the county, and I don't, and they did come and discuss it with us. My door's always open, but when I discuss with developers, I always have somebody else in the room with me. I listened to what they had to say, and their biggest question, though, was, could they get water and sewer from us? Well, that's what we're supposed to do. So we had to provide them with a letter, saying that we could provide them with water and sewer. They thought they might have a better chance with their zoning going to Brazetson, and that got, of course, ex-nayed, and they went to the county, and that got ex-nayed. As far as mayor, and I think I can speak for city council, too, we are not interested in that whatsoever.
If I'm not mistaken, does it part of the property sit in our city line? Does it, a piece of it go across city line?
See the green right there? It is, and it's zone agricultural.
Okay, so just, I'm just gonna add some technical...
Yeah, no, go ahead.
If I decide that, hey, I want to purchase that property, and I put my driveway on the city of Hushton side...
We would deny it. I already did that, they already tried. That's agricultural, and unless your city council makes something different in the state agriculture. And whatever they put there, I'd like for that piece to be a buffer, whether it's homes, whatever they end up doing, that is one small buffer we do have. But I don't want anybody to think for one minute that any of us are gonna try to work with warehouses. That's a dead deal in Hushton, and they'll have to... Now, they happen in a year, and they can go back to the zoning, so you're right, the year's up, they're probably gonna hit Jackson County again.
Will we have your public support?
Yes. As I could have been. I, um, I, but I can't, I'm just letting y'all know, we as a city council, it's not in our city limits. So just know, whatever they do, we will, as you all got together last time, and you did a very good job. And that's where we are on it, okay? You're welcome. Okay, now we're into our reports, and mayor report, I don't know that I really have anything except, Susan, it was nice working with you, if Mindy was here, I would say the same. And to our two gentlemen, you better be ready. Man, we got a lot of work to do. We got a lot of things that we're doing, and we're involved in, and we're all so excited. Takes, the worst thing about government, it takes forever to get anything done. Isn't that right, Alma? I mean, forever. It is slow, it's really slow.
I just want to say, I just hope Mr. Askin, this has probably been the most productive meeting, with less drawn than we've had in a few months.
I like it, I really do. Okay, so I can't think of anything else for me. And Mr. Muniz Rider, what you got?
I have a couple things.
Okay.
One, we are gonna go through the upcoming events and meetings, and Jennifer's gonna do that in a moment. There are a lot of them, so please keep and listen to them. We have them on our website and whatnot. I do want to let everyone know that we are closed on Veterans Day on Monday of next week. The second item, there was a request to look at Cabin Drive for cut-throughs and whatnot. I want to update the public on that, that we have ordered some stop signs to put on there at one of the intersections on Cabin Drive, and then we're also looking at potential locations for maybe a speed bump or two along there. So we're looking at that for the short term, we're putting, we're getting stop signs, and when they come in, we'll have signs that go up that notify when they're going, that there's signs ahead and things like that, so we're not gonna catch anyone off guard.
Is it gonna be better than the quarter code speed bumps we have on White Street? Because they're delivering our humps, they're not really a speed...
Well, there's a speed bump and a speed table, they're two entirely different things.
Which one is... Okay, that's just a table.
Pass the table.
So that was a waste of time.
Speed or table.
So you think it needs to be higher?
If you're gonna, if you're gonna, you want speed to be lower on this street, because everyone climbs down this street.
And they just hit it and go over it?
And just go... Honestly, I do it. So if I can go over that, it's like...
You know what I have a hard time with on White Street? It's a school bus, and I'm so sorry to these school bus drivers here, but they need to slow down, it's the school bus. Okay, we'll check in to see if it needs to be...
It doesn't stop, it doesn't, it doesn't slow you down like a speed bump does. It just, it just...
There are traffic requirements when you put those things up, you're safe with the N U T C, which is the traffic manual, and we'll look at that. For now, we're doing stop signs.
Yeah.
And first step, so we're in the process...
I just want to say one more thing. They're poorly constructed. Help people come out and say the bricks are off, it's where you can do the thing. All it did was one day, you learn how to time it, and they jump it. So there's no slowdown, you just figured out how to hit that hump and keep going.
All right, we'll work on that.
You can get down there at the next White Street, too.
I have to give it a try.
Okay. All right, we had a neat, I'm so sorry, I apologize.
More, but wait, there's more. Traffic, or the trash R F P is due tomorrow. You already received one, we anticipate to get several more. I talked to, I think, sent out three or four or two companies that have asked for it. It's been posted on the Georgia Department of Website, it's been on our website, so we'll have those in, they're due tomorrow, and we'd love to be reviewing those and bringing them back to the city council for potential awarding at the end of this month, beginning of next month. That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay, good.
Is that, excuse me, does that mean recycle?
Yes.
Trash and recycle.
Yes, yes, yes. We are, we're trying to get that straightened out before Christmas, that's all. Before Christmas, so that you got noise pitch packages. Okay, we do have a reason to use executive session tonight for?
Personnel, real estate, and travel location.
Okay, all three. So I need a motion to go out. Yeah, I'm, excuse me, go into executive session, second, second. Thank you.
For personnel, real estate, and travel location, all three.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you second it?
Do you have anything to do with that?
Okay. Is that a lie or the truth?
Basically, I just let you show the...
Why are they leaving the door open? There you go.
What was that?
I said, don't leave the door open.
Okay, I need a motion to go out of executive session, thank you. Second, thank you very much, on paper. Thank you. Okay, so that was our work session. Upcoming events and meetings. Do you want, can you talk really loud from right there, Jennifer, or you want to go up and...
Oh, I can talk loud.
Okay, everybody listen.
Okay, so, um, okay, here we are. On November the 12th, which is Tuesday, again, we have our regular council meeting. That's on Tuesday out here in Tremendevo. And Jessica's going to talk about November the 18th.
Okay, I'm going to sit here if that's all right, if everybody can hear me. November the 18th is our standard planning commission meeting. We will not be having a planning commission meeting. It is canceled. However, this will be one of the meetings where Northeast Georgia Regional Commission comes and talks to stakeholders that are interested and the steering members for the comprehensive plan. So this meeting, we're going to try to do a few of them here and there, one in the afternoon, one in the morning, one in the mid-afternoon. For some weird reason, I've had this conversation already, but however weird it may be, that meeting is going to be at 2:30. So if anybody can come out and participate, we appreciate it. Don't worry if you can't make it. We will have more. But anybody that is a concerned citizen, business owner, realtor, real estate developer, anybody that's interested in seeing where Hushton is going in the next 20 years, we would love for you to come out. It'll be at City Hall. It'll be in our little conference room at City Hall, and that is on November the 18th at 2:30. So anybody and everybody, if we need more seats, I'll come over here and steal seats. So y'all come out, please. It makes a big difference in the document that your council and your staff uses to see what you want. The comprehensive plan is the, and I'm going to talk, you know, I'll talk all night about a comprehensive plan, but the comprehensive plan is the citizens' plan of what they want to be done in their community. So public participation is the most important thing. So y'all, please come out. I know 2:30 is a little rough for some people, but we will have others. Thank you.